Okay, so it's 6:30, so I'd like to call to order the Pennsyl County Regional School Committee Business Meeting of December 15th, 2015. So Wayne Adams is not here. Joanna Blanchard, I am here. Doug Jalina is not here. Andy Murphy is here. Lisa O'Connor is absent tonight. Brian Page is here. Chris Redding is here. Chris Weil is here. And Jack Belet is here. So, Pledge of Allegiance?
It's buried behind the tables.
Oh, no.
Behind the table over here.
Okay.
(inaudible)
Doug, so we will need to amend the agenda because a grant just came in today for the cafeteria that we'll need to approve, so we'd like to put that first, just before the batting cage donation on the agenda, so can I have-
Greg, do you have the name of the grant?
I do. It's the New England Dairy and Food Council grant.
All right, so can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay.
We didn't have discussion.
Oh, I forgot, yes, discussion.
The only thing that I'd like to say is there's a few items sometimes on the new business that I would like some additional information for in preparation, so like, for an example, district mascot. A quick little memo as to what, like, I have no idea what that means, if there's been a complaint, if there's been, someone hit the mascot, like, just something like that. I don't, it would be nice for that, or even the elevator audit or something, just so that we're, we come knowing what that topic is about. Would be helpful, I think.
Okay. All right, you know, I mean, on the flip side, too, when this goes out, we're all, we all can call in also, so just-
Right, but even for public, the public who doesn't think that they necessarily have that option, I think, I think back when I was chairperson years ago, I would make sure that there would be something for each of the items if it was appropriate, so that people had information, that would give them background information as to what we would be discussing.
Okay. So noted? All right, so we already approved the agenda.
I think you did a great job.
Thanks.
It wasn't, never mind.
Okay.
That really was not a necessary comment.
Yeah, we already approved it, yeah. I just forgot to open for a discussion.
Okay.
Okay, so the minutes, so the business meeting minutes of November 17th, 2015, I need a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all, any discussion?
No, how about discussion?
Any discussion?
I would like to discuss the fact that the overnight field trip policy, the fact that there were that many motions, I don't recall. And I certainly don't recall voting in favor or voting against tabling.
Yeah, that one motion is messed up.
Well, there were two motions.
Three.
Well, there were two tabling motions, and both I voted against, which I think I would have voted for tabling them, so I'm confused as two.
Okay, what did you want to amend?
So where, there's, I think, four motions altogether, the first one, I think what was noted was appropriate.
It was not voted.
Right, so the second one and the third one had to do with tabling the motion.
Okay.
I don't recall why we had two motions to table it, and then both-
The first one, we did it because we couldn't discuss. We were all in favor until we couldn't discuss it, so that's why we voted it down, so.
Yeah.
I did vote against it myself, even though I made the motion so we could discuss it.
Voted against the motion to table.
Yeah. So the first one is correct, but then the next vote is really messed up.
Right.
And I've got the correct, I went and watched the video and wrote it down. So I have the same concern. It says it was moved by Chairman Blanchard and seconded by Ms. Redding to table the overnight field trip policy. Motion carried. The motion did not carry, and the vote is messed up. The motion to table was made by Joanna, and Chris seconded it. And the yeses were Doug, Joanna-
Wait a minute, Doug, Joanna.
Chris and Andy.
Chris Redding?
The no's, yes. I have it written down, I'll give this to you.
Okay.
And this is, I watched the video like three times to sort this out. The no's were Lisa, Brian, Jack, myself, and Wayne, I couldn't figure which way he actually went, because he abstained and then he said he would vote against it, so it doesn't change the vote count, but the motion did fail, it did not pass.
Okay.
And it was 3.7 to 5.3, so here's the whole tabulation, if Wayne voted or not.
Okay. Is that it?
Any other discussion on the agenda? No? Okay. So, all in favor of the minutes as amended? Anybody opposed? Okay. All right, so a motion to approve the Business Finance and Operations Subcommittee meeting minutes of December 1st, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Second.
Yeah, any discussion? None? Okay, all in favor? What? That's, that's correct.
Fine, that's all right, no.
Okay, that's unanimous. All right, and you need a motion to approve the Communications Subcommittee meeting minutes of December 1st, 2015?
So moved.
Second? Okay, any discussion? Second was Brian. You're okay, all in favor? All right. A motion to approve the Human Resources Subcommittee meeting minutes of December 1st, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
Second was Jack. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Okay. I just see communications, right? Okay, so a motion to approve the Human Resources-
You did the-
That's what I just did. Okay, Teaching, Learning, and Academy Subcommittee meeting minutes of December 1st, 2015?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Nope, all in favor? Okay. And finally, I need a motion to approve the Policy Subcommittee meeting minutes of December 1st, 2015?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor? Jack, you in favor? Okay. All right. Okay, thank you. So now on to public comment. We have a few people here, members of the audience, but anybody like, have anything to say at this point?
You know, when I sit here, I can sit down.
You want to sit, yeah?
I can see everybody's hands.
Okay. All right, Superintendent's report, please.
Okay, great, so the two audience members are actually from my superintendent's report. So I'm going to start with Danny DiCamillo. Dan, you want to come up? And maybe actually you could sit right here next to Mr. Page. That would be great. So Danny has volunteered to be a representative, a student representative, to the school committee. And it's been quite a while since we've been able to have a representative. You know that annually, we try to get a representative, and we've had some success, but not the kind that Dan represents. Dan's going to be a consistent member and attend. So he wanted to know, you know, what his responsibilities were, because he, I'm going to have him introduce himself and tell you a little bit about what he does and all that. He's a busy guy, and so I said, well, at the beginning, it would be really helpful if you could work with Mr. Seymour on a monthly basis, look at our agenda, see what might fit, and be a connection, you know, between the school committee and the students at the school. So we're going to try that out and, and try to build some momentum with our student representative. And Dan, I thought if you could just give us a little bit of your background, some information about who you are as a student, that'd be great.
All right, I'm a junior. I'm on student council, and last year I went to this leadership conference they have here called Mass Star. I was also hoping, we're interviewing people for that tomorrow, so that's one thing, I found it really meaningful, and I think there's a lot of opportunities in that.
I can help you out.
All right.
So when I first came here to Pennsyl County, Dan was one of the first students in the middle school to meet with me in a group that we talked about innovation schools. And from Dan and others in that group, the innovation schools sort of developed. So, you know, you might want to call him one of the originators of our innovation school initiative. He and Colin Tar and some other students at the middle school all met with me periodically to get that underway. So I've always kept that in mind, and Dan has been a good touchstone for me when I have questions about, you know, what might be good or what might not be good, I always think about Dan and his good advice. So I think he'll be a really good resource to us, and I told him that tonight, we just introduce him and kind of dip his toe in the water, and then next, next month, he can come with a report or with other students and, and start to build some momentum. Sound okay to everybody?
Very good, thank you.
Sounds good. Welcome. Thank you for volunteering.
Thank you very much.
No one bites except him.
Nobody bites.
We have a policy against that.
Yeah, exactly. So thanks for coming and introducing yourself tonight. I know it's quick, but next month, we'll have more, more kind of an action planned for you. Okay, well, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And then next, maybe Dawn, if you'd like to come and take Dan's spot at the table. So this is Dawn Kalinowski.
Hi, everybody.
And Dawn is one of our star math teachers here at the, at the high school. And the reason that I asked Dawn to come tonight is I wanted to get a sense from Dawn, well, for you all to get a sense from Dawn of the same caliber that I have about the value of our accelerated math program and the kinds of, of opportunities it affords students here at the high school. And Dawn is also the person who's currently teaching our Calculus BC class, and to give you all some sense of what that's, what that's about, too. And Dawn is also sort of leading the charge with Ed, our department chair, for what's next after BC Calculus, like, what comes after that. And so that kind of introduces you, Dawn, and I didn't know if you could just give us a few words about accelerated math, the students, their enthusiasm, like I experienced the other day when I visited your class.
I would love to. Thank you for having me, everybody. It's nice to see you. I would just like to say, it's such an exciting time to be a teacher at Pennsyl County because, well, for a lot of reasons, but the BC Calculus is super exciting to me, and I proposed BC Calculus to my department chair, and this wasn't the first time I proposed it. I had actually preferred, proposed it several years earlier, and for some reason, I don't know why, it never took off, but it, there wasn't, I don't think, that communication between central office and the high school, or the high school and the principal's office, or maybe the department chair. But it seems now it's a really great time where we can kind of, we all seem to be on the same page, so good ideas seem to be put into place, so I'm happy to see that. One of the reasons I'm a really strong advocate for BC Calculus is because my son is a junior at Andover High, and my son is in BC Calculus as a junior. So we offer it here at Pennsyl County now, which is exciting, but for predominantly seniors. So at Andover High, my son is not even on an accelerated track, he's just a gifted math student, I think he gets it from his mother. But, so he's not even on an accelerated track, that is just built into the curriculum there for their top students, so this year especially with the start of the accelerated program that we started last year with the accelerated geometry, we have a really big need for that, you know, that forward kind of thinking, that advanced position for these students to end up at. And I think that, that the time is great for them, because we would have students who took some classes, they took their, the initiative on themselves to get ahead, and so we would not have had a class for them if it, if it wasn't for the new, the new layout of the accelerated program. What BC Calculus is, is a College Calculus I and II, where before we only had the College AP Calculus AB, which is College Calc I. So it's a super exciting time at Pennsyl County, and I feel strongly that as a math teacher, that students should be limited by their own drive and intelligence and not by the curriculum, but that has not been the case up until now, because we did have students who would be candidates for BC Calculus, but we just didn't offer it. So it's great to see that, and I have a class of 14 exceptional students this year. And so that's super exciting for me. And those students, as my son progressed through Andover High, the math, the math classes there, I have students who are just as smart as my son, don't tell him I said that, in my class, and they just did not have the same opportunity as, as he had just because of the curriculum, so that's exciting. Another thing I'm excited about is last year's accelerated geometry classes, now this year's accelerated Algebra II class, which I piloted that class, and I'm going with them to accelerated Algebra II, and I'm hoping, I don't know how it'll work out, but to go with them to, we're going to need a new accelerated pre-calculus next year, if we're going to be able to service and maintain the advancements that we've made up until this point, so I'm hoping that that's going to happen next year. And then all the students, all the students that are in that class right now will be on track for BC Calculus. So we have 14 students now, but we could have a class or maybe even two classes-
Right.
-of BC Calculus in the future, so that is just so great for the district, I think, and I also think that it might be very beneficial in us, maybe capturing some of the students from the middle school who maybe would be thinking of a private school, because we just didn't offer the same rigor and level that they would have. So I think it's a great thing for the district, and it's exciting to watch the whole sequencing unfolding.
Yeah, I visited the Algebra II class that Dawn was referencing, and the kids are just amazing, and so like, I'm not a mathlete, that's not my strength, and they are.
They are. And they're fired up about it.
And they are so fired up about math, and we were talking about, like, what do you, what do you think next would look like? Would it be theoretical or, you know, more practical? And like, Dawn was asking them, so who's really into theoretical math? And like, some kids were, and other kids weren't, and it was very interesting.
It really was, and having the accelerated program actually affords us the opportunity to introduce them to some of the theoretical aspects of math, which they might have never seen before in a class that was your typical algebra class, would be maybe beyond the scope or the rigor of the kids who really had that spark or that, you know, that interest in the theory. So, like I said, it's just exciting to be able to see those kids, who I was telling Dr. McQueen that one of my students, we were talking about a problem, and I was like, instead of just asking, how do you do this, like, why is this working and what is happening in this problem? And so she was, one of my students who was amazing, she was just obsessed with the answer, and she was at the board trying to figure out, like, I just threw something out there, like, what would this mean and where would this go? And then finally, you know, three minutes or four minutes after the bell rang, I had to like, get out, you're done. You can't do any more math here, you're going to have to leave because you have another class. So to be able to see those kids, we have a large number of those kids actually who are excited about it, and it's just great to give them that, you know, that opportunity here, so.
Yeah, Jack?
This, maybe this is something that we could use, Andy, on the website, to inform about the accelerated program, because what you told us here in a very short time could be printed out, and the parents would know about this ahead of time and say, hey, why aren't you going?
Yeah, I feel like it really puts us in a different kind of, a different kind of level.
Well, it's, well, I didn't mean to interrupt, but it's working, I know personally it's working well at the junior, the middle school level as well. You know, those kids are getting a head start-
I know.
...on stuff, and it's exciting for them as well.
And I feel like it's, yeah, it is, and it's something I think that we've needed, and it's so great to finally have it.
We're trying to build momentum across all the content areas for this, so the concert the other night was kind of a good example. So you're wondering, well, how does the music program relate to the math program? So it, oh, no, here we go. So our, so Tony Beatrice would tell you that our music program is trying to expand and reach kids that normally wouldn't, yeah, thanks, if you can, would, that normally wouldn't pick up an instrument, he's trying to reach out to kids who would normally not even be interested in music. So our accelerated programming, like in math, we're trying to expand and reach kids that maybe would never think of themselves as, like, that's something for me, and give them that taste of what it might be, because I think for a lot of kids, without the opportunity, they'd never know. And so, for whether it's math or any of the other accelerated programs, that's what we're trying to do.
One of the things that I have a question for you is Andover, I think, starts middle school year earlier than Pennsyl County does, just by the way that the district is set up, and whether, I look at it as almost a missed year of opportunity to start doing some of those accelerated classes, whether there's any talk in the district about perhaps starting to do that even at the sixth grade level, because I think some of the sixth graders are ready for that higher challenge. And especially now where there's a couple different books being used, I'm not going to say curriculum, but, you know, we're overusing it.
We're trying out some different books as a supplement.
Yeah, well, and that kind of worries me in a little, in a way, because I see three different schools coming to the middle school, and even though you might have a separation of some accelerated students and regular math students, their backgrounds and exposure will be significantly different. And, and I question how that's going to work for some of the accelerated, do you know what I mean? Because like Singapore math is now at Page, and just the different resources they're using.
Well, it's, it's actually not at Page, it's actually that we're trying some different curriculum materials to supplement, so.
Well, having a student in that class has been primarily from that textbook.
So the, the concept of accelerating kids through the whole system is, is a good one, and we have to do that from the high school down, we can't do it the other way up so much. So we've, we've got the middle school and the high school sort of connected right now, and now it's time to see if we can push it down through the, the different grades. So I, I think that's a really good idea. It can also be tied to the STEAM program at Page or back now, it can be tied to the IB programming. IB still has to come up online, you know, so we're waiting for certification there, so that's all, all right in line with what the, you know, we're thinking about. Anything else for Dawn?
Yeah, I just, I had a question. So, so the current structure is that the ninth graders would take geometry, and then 10th is Algebra II, and 11th is pre-calc, and then 12th grade is calc BC. So does that take the place of AP Calc, or is the BC Calc in AP course?
So the, they're both AP courses.
Okay.
The AP Calc AB class covers College Calculus I, so the pace is a lot slower.
Okay.
And calculus, AP Calculus BC covers College Calculus I and II. So that means that the pace would be half, half the pace at that BC level, which means that the BC classes run at the exact same pace that you would be taking in college, whereas the AB section of AP Calculus is the same content as calc I, but spread out over a whole year rather than in one semester. So for some kids, to, there are a lot of kids who would be candidates for AP Calc at one level or the other, depending on the rigor and the pace that they can handle.
Okay. So then when you take the AP exam, if you're in BC, are you taking two separate AP exams? You're just taking-
It's the same exam, but they get an AB sub-score. So they could, they could get a five on the A, the AB part, and then they could really technically get a one or another five on the BC, so they break it down. So you don't really lose anything by taking the BC, because that would be like, if you worked harder and then you got a lower score, nobody wants to do that.
Right.
But you get a sub-score, so usually the fact that you've gone past the AB content, you're using all those skills that you use in AB, so even the students, if they weren't to be, maybe get a stellar grade on the BC part, all that application and practice and repetition of the AB content will, in theory, bring their AB score up. So that's, I mean, it's brand new this year, so I'm, I'm dying to see it as well, as I'm sure you all are, so something to be looking out for, it's exciting.
Definitely.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night, thanks, Dawn.
He knows, he knows he can go.
Yeah.
Just in case he doesn't know. Okay, so we are on to new business. So the first thing we have to discuss and approve is the grant for the cafeteria, so Greg, do you want to talk about this for a few minutes?
Sure. The, our food service vendor for the management side of our food service program has always been looking for a way to ramp up more involvement with breakfast. Lunch to an extent, too, but no breakfast, because part of the free and reduced program, as well as they'd like to capture kids eating breakfast. So while thinking about this, they were thinking about what kids would like, and they had researched it and asked if we would be interested in this, and I said, well, it doesn't cost us anything, it can't hurt. So they approved, they got a grant from the New England Dairy and Food Council, not in Chartwell's name, in Pennsyl County's name, to put in, at the middle and high school only at this time, two kiosks, you know, little things with the wheels and things, where they can put breakfast bars and, and create a smoothie bar. Including this grant will be two blenders for the locations, as well as a whole bunch of those little bullet extra tops and things like that, so they can make it, and it would be the same price as our current breakfast. Our people on free and reduced program would be eligible to get it for pre or reduced, and any other children who want to do it could also participate at the $2 level that everybody pays for breakfast. So it doesn't really cost us anything, so I figured we'd give it a shot, because I'd bring it to you. The problem, the reason we had to amend the agenda is they just got the news of it today, and because most places close out their fiscal year, they want to get all their grant stuff paid out, so they were hoping to get it back by Thursday, so they graciously allowed me to amend the agenda for this, so hopefully I will have you vote to accept the funds. I'll sign the paperwork tomorrow and send it back, and hopefully when they come back from vacation, there'll be smoothie bars.
All right, so I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve-
The donation.
The donation for the, from the New England Dairy and Food Council. Is there a second?
Second.
So now we can open it up for discussion?
Yeah, so is it a cash donation? You're talking about kiosks?
They're giving us $6,800.
Do they donate the kiosks and the equipment that goes with it? Is that our responsibility? What's the nature of it?
No, they're, they're giving us the $6,800, which matched the equipment cost that was submitted to them by Chartwell's, that how much it was going to cost to do this.
And then at the end of the, when that's done, we own the equipment.
It's in Pennsyl County's name, we own it. It's in Pennsyl County's name, it stays with us.
Is there advertising associated with it, or what's the benefit to New England Dairy and Food?
I haven't seen that they're asking for any, it doesn't say like they get any banners or headlines or anything, I think it's just some places have a certain, pretend that they give out for grants and things through different tax breaks and things they get, so I'm guessing it may fall into that. I didn't really research it, so it came, just showed up to me today, literally at 2:00. So, I don't know, all I know is we own the equipment when it's over, and it doesn't cost us anything. Those are the main things I considered going forward, so.
Jack?
If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's the same program that Lisa, myself, and I believe Jill, when she was on the committee, we went down to, down the Cape, and the NFL sponsors this through the Dairy Association.
Oh, yeah.
And it's the 60, those who watch football games, I know you do, Joanna, the 60 thing about the kids, they want to get the kids motivated.
Play 60?
Yeah. They want to get the kids motivated, and this is through the Dairy Association, I believe.
Yeah, actually, if I looked at the little email, it does have something about the New England Patriots at the bottom, so you're probably right.
Devin McCordy.
Yeah, Devin McCordy. Well, he can't walk right now, he's going to sprain the ankle, which is the event for the playoffs. But, yeah, so, yeah, it's probably the exact same thing.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving? Is anyone in this?
Thank you.
Okay. So, next up is the batting cage donation, does somebody want to, you want to lead this?
Yeah. So you'll read in the minutes of the Business Finance and Operations Subcommittee minutes that there's a request from the PAA to donate the money that would be needed to put in a batting cage. And what we've had Greg had to do is to take a preliminary look at the area where they'd like it, and it was determined that down at the far end of the track, just below the hill, is the, is the best area for them to consider for a batting cage. So the Business Finance and Operations Subcommittee wanted to move this forward to you all for approval with the caveat that all permits and funding be on the front end, so that the district is not left, you know, holding the bag for anything at the end of the day. So with your approval, I'll connect back with the PAA and let them know what your decision is, and then they could take it to the next step, because without your approval, I haven't really shared with them, you know, any of the other details.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the batting cage with the understanding that all permits and funds are available prior to the start of work. So I'm going to make a motion to approve, um, the batting cage with the understanding that all permits and funds are available prior to the start of work. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion.
If we go forward with it, I think we've gotten stuck with some of these donations in the past. So I'd like to make this more a two-step process. We give a preliminary approval. And once they get all their ducks in, or they come back to us, we can have another revisit. And that is to say, once they know where it's going and once they have the permits, things like that. So we don't, we'll have the full picture at that point. One of my concerns, whereas we've just upgraded all the facilities, there's a lot of underground electric drainage and things like, and sprinklers and everything else. Whatever they do, wherever it gets placed, it doesn't disrupt any of the infrastructure that was just completed. And that would be important. So I guess I'd like to make a friendly amendment that this is a preliminary approval based on a final approval once they come back with a full presentation of location. And I assume there's no cost to the district. Obviously, they got to figure out how it gets maintained, how they get the electric there. I'd like to know the whole story at that point.
Okay. Do you have that? Uh huh. Yes, Kenny.
Um, adding to that, I'd also be curious if, is this going to be a, a permanent structure with cement footings or whatever? Or is it going to be one that can be moved? Because it may be.
Their idea was a permanent one.
Okay.
And do you want to talk about the location?
That's a level of detail I'd like to see. Maybe add a rendering of it or something.
Well, because who knows where you might want the batting cage in the future.
Yeah. So Greg Haddon talked with them about having the same footings and equipment that are currently out there to match everything. And that it would be at the lower end of the hill as you go toward the river. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like in the back of the track, it goes down an embankment.
Yeah. Okay. That's not.
And that way it would be out of the way of any electrical or plumbing or anything.
Just so that, and the reason we said that was because, and that we're going to put that there is because some of the holes have to be four feet deep. And that was with the electrical and stuff that's out there, we didn't want it disturbed.
Okay. Doug was, Doug had a question. Jack?
Part of my point was down below there, we need to get to the water reservoir. There's an equipment building down there. And just make sure whatever structure is there doesn't block people in. Other than that, I think it's a great use for that piece of property because it never does get used.
Jack?
Uh, one question I never asked in the Subcommittee is that, uh, is this going to be donated to the school?
That's my understanding. They would be donating it to Penticat.
The district.
And so that if, if our girls were using it, our softball team was using it, they couldn't come in and say, hey, we donated that. We want to use it.
No, that's not my understanding at all.
Okay. Good enough. Good enough.
Any other discussion? Okay. So all in favor of the, um, motion as amended? When you have it between us?
Can I just go over that?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So if I get it right, Chris, if I don't, correct me. So the amended, uh, plan would be for them to come back with a full plan, a description of what it is, where it is, everything. And then that would give you something to give a final approval for. So this is go ahead, get the plan together, and then come back to us with all the final details, right?
Permits and everything.
Permits, everything. Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Do we have a second to the? No, no.
You accept a second.
Sorry. Yeah. So all in favor?
Okay. Okay.
Good. All right. Surplus books back from Bagnell. Greg, do you want to talk about this first?
Sure.
Because I'm not sure what motion we're making.
We have a very energetic new principal at Bagnell School who's actively cleaning up. And he has come across quite a little cachet of old unused books, most of them 20, 25 years old, the old reading programs that we no longer use. Uh, his estimate is approximately 448 of them. So he'd like to, uh, get your approval to, A, offer to them to town's libraries if they want them. And if not, um, pass them off to an agency who supports education around the world that can be donated wherever they may see fit to put them. There's really no value to these things at all. There's, like I said, they're 20, 30 years old, copyrights in like 1986 and things. So this is just an example of one.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Do the next one.
All right. Next one, RFP for the cafe service.
Yeah. So again, if you, if you take a look at the Business Finance and Operations Minutes, you'll see that we presented, Greg presented to them, um, a draft RFP. And what they are representing to you is that we'd like to move forward with this hybrid model that we have for the cafeteria service, where we have a manager and our own personnel. And, um, the RFP, um, we'd like to have back by February 2nd. So if anybody has any edits or concerns or questions, you have until February 2nd to get those to Greg. And then we'll come back in February with the final RFP for approval here. But the intent is to move forward with an RFP with this blended or hybrid model that we have for the cafeteria. So just a point of, of discussion for you. Sound okay?
I know that the Business Subcommittee got this. Did everybody get a copy of those?
No, that's what we're here for, is to make sure everybody gets a copy. Yeah.
That's what I was going to say. And I thought the comments were going to be back at the beginning of January for time.
Yeah.
He said February.
Um, I had February 2nd as the.
January 5th.
Oh. I think it was Jan.
Because you backed into that we had to do it.
I was trying to think. We have to.
That's our first.
We have to get it to the state for approval by the first week of April. We have to obviously go through the bid process, which backs us into the beginning of February. So to put the RFP out, I was hoping, I think what I was hoping for is to get the comments from.
The finance comments, January 5th. And then the full comments.
Right. The full committees.
Two weeks after.
Yeah. Whatever our meeting is. Well, I think.
So maybe we're.
I think you are, but it, it doesn't matter to me as long as everybody's in agreement.
Yeah. We'll get it to everybody.
It's January 19th.
Right. Okay.
So what's the final date for return of the comments?
19th of January.
19th of January. Great. As long as everybody understands.
I wanted them to do that. And then the full committee.
Jeff, I thought we were voting on it on the 19th.
Of January?
Right.
Uh, no. Um, it was in February. Am I right?
Right.
Yeah. You're going to vote in February. So we'll, we'll make sure it's back to you. Yeah.
Okay. So are you distributing it to the full committee at this point? Or is it still in Subcommittee and then going to the full committee?
Um, if the Subcommittee's fine. I mean, I, I have this electronic format. Obviously, I can send it out as an email to everybody. That's easy enough.
Yeah.
Sure.
And is that, are we scheduled to have?
Greg, could you help him?
Yeah.
Are we scheduled to have, are we scheduled to have a finance Subcommittee meeting? On the 5th? That one's scheduled? Okay.
You made us day.
Okay. Um, all right. Whittier School Committee opening. So, yes, let's go back. Um, so David Mansfield of West Newbury, his term is up on March 31st. Um, so Jen, if you could please put in the paper that if any interested, anybody, if there are any interested parties in the position for a school committee, um, for Whittier, it is a three-year term. If you could send, have them send a letter of intent to Mary Ann, please.
By the first week of January?
Oh, by the first, yeah.
Sometime in the first week of January.
By the first week of January.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, any questions or discussions on, on that?
So we'd be, if, it's my understanding that you'd follow the same process that you did last time where candidates would come to a meeting in January, for instance, and you'd talk through it with them?
Yes. We'll invite him to the next business meeting.
Okay. Perfect.
Can I just clarify?
Yes.
Is David Mansfield indicated? He's not going to seek another term?
No, he hasn't indicated that. Okay. So next on the agenda is the elevator audit.
Yeah. So Greg Haddon did an audit of all the mechanics in the system. And, um, the lift that's over here by the arc department, uh, he found, uh, had an outdated certificate. So he's about, he's currently underway for having that remedied. And, um, I'm not sure what the outcome will be. Uh, there could be the possibility of a fine with that. Uh, but I'll let you know as soon as, as we, um, you know, progress through that process. So I just wanted to inform you that Greg is, um, you know, updating that lift certificate. And we'll be back with more information as we get it.
Any questions? Chris?
Um, how outdated? Why wasn't it caught? Is it the inspector's responsibility versus ours?
No, it's our responsibility for this one. So I know in the, um, uh, in the past, we've had an, uh, a difficulty with an elevator being missed by our, uh, the contractor that we scheduled with. Uh, so based upon that information, he did another walkthrough of everybody to make sure we had everything. And this is one that wasn't on their list. So we'll have to rectify that as we, as we move forward.
How'd this happen?
I, I don't know, Jack. It, it was left off the list. I don't know more than it was left off the list.
Is there any preemptive work you can do to alert whoever be the party who would decide to find us to let them know that we're aware of it and we're trying to address it?
Well, this is electronic and it's pretty automated. So the, the minute that Greg moves forward and pushes the button of sorts, you know, it'll, it'll trigger all the different agency actions. So I don't know what that will entail. And, um, you know, so we, we just want to move forward with it as quick as possible. As soon as I have the outcome, I can let you know what it is.
I know with my experience, uh, working for the town, you would have a elevator service company. They actually schedule the, um, inspections. It was their responsibility to schedule the inspections of the elevators. So, um.
Greg actually told me that.
I don't think this is going to be an easy answer for you right now, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Greg indicated that it's not as simple as us dealing directly with the state. The state requires that we have this intermediary agent that does the work as, as Doug is indicating. And that's what complicates it a little bit.
I think secondly, too, um, I've been through this in multiple buildings because that's just a little lift. It goes up two feet.
Yeah.
It's very easy to oversee that. You're thinking elevators with doors that open in multiple floors and everything.
Yeah.
The thing I would ask is, are they still doing the stair lift down on the end?
That's completely dismantled.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's not even on the railing anymore.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Any other discussion? All right. Um, the next thing on the agenda is the curriculum policy. We're ultimately going to need an appro, we're looking for an approval on that. But Jeff, would you like to start off discussing it?
Sure. Yeah. So, um, the, the draft curriculum renewal policy has been to you once already as an introduction and has been to both the Teaching, Learning and Accountability Subcommittee and to the Policy Committee. And, um, at this point, they'd like to recommend it for adoption. Uh, the intent is to implement this for the upcoming school year so that we can begin to update our curricula, uh, the different subject areas in a more systematic way.
So, um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the curriculum renewal policy.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Any questions? Okay. All in favor? Is?
Yep.
Okay. So again, the next thing on is the physical restraint policy. We will need to adopt, approve this. So would you like to talk about that?
Sure. This is coming directly from your attorney. Uh, there's been a change to the regulations in the state. And our attorney is recommending that we adopt this so that when January 1st comes with the new regulations that we're in compliance, uh, we're currently working out the details for the procedures. Uh, we've already gone through some training in the district for the administrative team with Paige Tobin.
So I'll make a motion to adopt the new physical restraint policy.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Chris?
All right. So the, the problem I have with this is that it refers to the restraint policies at the individual schools, which we haven't seen. So without seeing that and knowing that those are within legal guidelines or recommendations or whatever.
Yeah.
I have a hard time accepting this policy or, or approving this policy without seeing the supporting documentation behind it. Like, so I, I'm not quite sure.
So you're referring to the procedures that it talks about?
Yeah. Because it says that, um, where does it say? I'm looking off my phone. So, um, outlined in the, in, yeah, outlined in Penticat's. I mean, essentially, it's, it's referring to physical restraint procedures out there somewhere. I don't know where those are.
So we have physical restraint procedures right now that we're currently using? And those will be tuned up as well as we move forward?
And where are those, where are those posted or located? Or I, I, I think I looked at the Page, um, Student Handbook, and I didn't see anything there. So I don't know where the public would be aware of what the physical restraint procedures would be. Is it part of the maybe?
I can make those available.
Special ed documentation that students get that these are what we would use if your child. That, that's the piece that I have a hard time with.
Okay.
And having taught back in the 90s, knowing that it's very different now than it was back then and seeing some of the restraints that were done, I'm just hoping that, you know, that the procedures that are in place, if it comes to that point, are appropriate. And this is so much higher up than those details that I don't feel comfortable approving this without knowing what the details are, where, where they are derived from.
Yeah. So the policy is going to put us in compliance with the requirements from the state. The procedures are the details about how we implement those, those, um, the procedures are how we implement the restraint. So this is talking about a higher level.
Right. But see, I have a problem in saying, okay, well, we'll do this without knowing.
What the details are.
The details are either looking at them or knowing that they're what is prescribed by the state legally.
Well, the, the procedures are not prescribed. Paige is helping us to tune our own procedures up. The, this is what's prescribed by the state. So this puts us in compliance and then the procedures will, will come along after that. We, we currently have procedures in place.
Well, then I, I personally can't vote for this because I feel like the two have to go together, that you have to have the supporting procedures in place before you can adopt the policy referring to those procedures. And when I had read it in the Subcommittee Agenda two weeks ago, I had the same thought. Couldn't stay for that meeting.
Yeah. So anytime you have a question a couple of weeks ahead, it would be helpful to me if you could let me know so that I could provide the information. Uh, so would it be helpful now if I published out to everybody what the procedures are so that you can see that we have them?
And then where that would be located for general public.
And the location? Okay.
Right.
The procedures are already in place. We're just upgrading to what the state is now requiring, correct?
That's right.
Any other questions? Let's hear it, Phil. Okay. All in favor of the motion to adopt the new physical restraint policy? All opposed?
Robert? I'd like to ask the superintendent, could you touch base with, uh, Maureen over here and make sure that she's up to speed on those as well?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
All right. So we're on to the use of facilities policy. So this is the second reading because it wasn't unanimously approved at the last meeting. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the facility's use policy.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? No? Okay. All right. All in favor?
Oh, 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 I thought it said any second.
No, I said any discussion.
Yes.
Yes. That's why I was looking.
I wonder why you're looking at me.
Jack, that's why we're looking at you.
Hey, Sam, what's going on?
I brought a beer.
We're waiting.
Question. Greg is going to check all of the, all of the people that are using the buildings, whether they're, they're, uh.
You mean the group three nonprofit status?
Nonprofit, yes. Okay. My, my question also is, based upon what we're currently charging for the custodians, the custodians will go up next year, correct? A, a increase. Has that increase been added into the, the money? Or is this going to be $40 for the next eon years?
Well, you can, once the policy is made, obviously, you can update it every year for that type of an adjustment. for that type of an adjustment. This is the base for right now. That equals it now.
Do you feel safe with that? Chris?
Yeah, this is what we came up with. It was $35 an hour, and we added in the additional $5 to cover the bump in heat and electricity and water. So when you run through all the numbers, it seems very reasonable. And at one point, we thought about adding an automatic escalation clause to it, but that got people a little, you know, on edge. So we said, if it needs to get updated, I would look at that on a regular basis.
Okay. Under this, it goes to Greg Haddon first? Any use facility, does it go to Greg first?
The application goes to Greg first, right.
Go to Greg. Doesn't go to the building principals?
Mm-mm.
Goes to who after that?
Well, it depends. So if they need, if they need different, let's say that somebody has a question about their status, it would go to Greg. Let's say that it's a community education event, it would come to me. Let's say it's a for-profit, it would come to me. You know, so it depends upon who it is that's asking for it.
Okay. And is, is Deanne discussing with Greg Haddon the needs of the athletic program on every single building?
They have first dibs, so the athletic program, as it says in the policy, is the first in line for use of the facilities.
When are our fields going to rest?
It's all built into the program.
Are they going to rest in the summer? Is that it?
Greg has a plan for all of that, so I can't speak specifically for any particular field, but he has a whole resting and fertilization cycle already established.
Because I'd hate to see the money that we've invested in these facilities, in it being used, spring, summer, winter, fall.
Well, we're already doing that right now, so if there's a place that's suffering some erosion, or some overuse, Greg shuts the field down.
Right.
You know, so we've already got that in place.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a question, and it's, when I saw this on the agenda, I was confused, because in the minutes, it said that this was motion carried, unanimous approval, but then more detail after that, said Jack voted against it, so I think that has to be corrected. I just went back and I looked, and, because I was confused, I thought it was approved based upon... Do you see that, Mary Ann?
So, nothing, we have, I want Jack to know.
Oh, yeah.
We have a turf management program, too, that tells when fertilized and rests the field. That's all in there as well. I didn't know if you knew that.
It's not in there next year.
Turf management program?
No. We do it, we do it all ourselves.
Well, the program, we do all the work ourselves, but we've contracted out with the same gentleman that West Newbury uses, that draws...
Right, right.
Yeah, he comes around and tells us what we need to do.
But not the turf management, it's not gonna be here with the tractors and...
No, 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 no.
Jack?
The plan tells you when to rest the field, that's what I'm saying.
When we first met with Greg Haddon, none of this changes on this policy. This policy isn't determining that level of utilization of fields. But he takes, he's got a whole annual calendar. He blocks out, the first is when the fields and the facilities need to rest, then he blocks out the time that the school kids are using it, and then what's left is time for these other people. So he's already got a sequence to how he does it, so that's not gonna change anything.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor? Next is, we're gonna need approval on this new, new school committee website, but Andy, would you like to lead this first?
Sure. So you may recall, a few meetings ago, we sort of threw this out there, and then we went through the process of realizing we should develop protocols first, and a process for how we have content approved. So we've done all that. So this is our first take at website copy for the new school committee site, when the new website goes live. I did correct the error on Chris Redding's expiration date, so that's now the correct date.
The school committee term expiration...
So that's pretty much, you've seen all this before, there's nothing to it, it's the same document as before, and obviously, with our protocol now, we can update this and change it as we need, as we need to.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the school committee website copy.
Edits.
I'll second that.
Edits, edits, okay. All right, any discussion? Jack?
Jeff, you fine with this?
Yeah, everything's great.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, Andy, this is a lot of work.
Keeps me out of trouble.
Well, I don't know about that.
Okay, so next on the agenda is the district mascot. So I received an email from a former student expressing concern over our current mascot. And so what I would like to do is send it to subcommittee for further investigation and discussion. And in thinking about it, the one that I think it fits best with is the communications subcommittee.
Sure.
So I'd like to refer it there.
When you're finished.
Okay. So anyhow, that's my plan, as long as that's okay, Andy, and then it can be taken up.
Yeah, that's fine. We can take that up the next subcommittee meeting.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, questions?
What's, I don't know what the, what's the problem with, I mean, what was brought up?
She, this person just feels like the school committee, I mean, the school mascot is offensive.
Because it's an Indian?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Can we get a copy of the email? Does this, the school committee, can it be distributed?
Yeah, I could send it to the school committee.
And see what the issue really is?
Yep.
Have there been any other concerns expressed in the past?
Not to me.
For the whole, yeah.
This, I mean, this is the first one I've seen. Is it the first one you've seen, Jeff? I don't know if it has come up in the past at Penticoots. Does anybody remember?
No.
No.
Yes.
It comes up on a national basis.
Yeah, on a national, but...
It's a trend we probably ought to talk about.
Yep.
Content the website already.
Okay. All right, so that will be taken up at the January, I think it's 5th, subcommittee meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so, oh, one more question.
Can we, I mean, I don't know if you want to get your sports teams involved in that, if that's, I mean, if you're gonna change it, I think they're the ones that should have some input.
Well, I don't know that we are. We haven't, we need to talk through it.
Yeah, I think we talked it through, and I don't think anyone's changing anything initially.
No.
I mean, I'm just saying, if it, if it comes to a point where, you know, I think they're the ones that should have some input.
This is certainly a decision beyond just, I think, the school committee.
That's fine, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. So discussion on the FY '17 budget, Greg? I assume this is you?
Sure.
Jeff?
Jeff, you're doing it?
Look, Jeff, yeah. So the, this isn't a budget proposal that you have in front of you, it's just a spending plan for right now. As you know, the governor's budget doesn't come out until January, and until we get those numbers, it's really hard to put anything really concrete on paper. So what I've got for you, in addition to Greg's initial spending plan, in your packet are some initial ideas about, you know, what we might be considering for our priorities. I did put some additional information in, to your packet, about the consideration for things like Free All Day K. The governor has reduced some benefits for implementing Free All Day K, and it would cost us minimally $325,000 to try to do that. That isn't included in the initial spending plan. I'm just giving you that information in case somebody were to say, gee, what about All Day K? I've also included some initial information about homeroom class sizes at the elementary school. I just have one update that I wanted to give you. So we included October 1st numbers here. One class at Page School also has 24 students, not just the one at Donahue. So next year's grade two would have 24 students at Page. So we have about a third of our classes at 20 or below, about two-thirds of our classes at 20 or above, with just two classrooms at 24, predicted to be a 24. Staffing trends, too, I included some of that information. The staffing trends are following, of course, the patterns of student enrollment, so there has, there's a small dip in our student enrollment. It looks like about two teachers per grade level at Page is starting to evolve, about three at Bagnell, and we're still kind of between two and three at Donahue and Sweetser. Adding one teacher to four grades to offset the 24 students, which was a concern last year, would cost us about $240,000, $250,000. Offsetting all 12 classes that are above 20 would be around $720,000. So again, those numbers aren't included in the initial spending plan, but I wanted to give you that information on the front end. For no additional money, you can see the kinds of things that we're thinking about for classes for the upcoming school year, expanding accelerated programming, innovation school programming, et cetera. So I wanted to give you an idea of what you might see coming forward in the spending plan, and we talked through that at the subcommittee level already. I think many of you probably have already heard this.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, so the last thing on the agenda is school committee goals. So given that, Jack, given that it's gonna be the new year, the next meeting, I was thinking it would be good to establish what our school committee goals are as a group for the upcoming year. So I was wondering if anybody would want to volunteer to work on a draft of the school committee goals that we could bring forward at the next business meeting? Is anybody interested in this?
Jack, you got a lot of free time in your hands.
No.
You do.
You do. I'd happy, be happy to be the honorary typist, but I think we all should be.
Yeah, no, I was more thinking that, yeah, so somebody could just be in contact with everybody, so if people had ideas for goals, they could email them to you, and you could put together a draft for the next meeting.
Now, in the past, doing stuff like that has been like, like, looking at things and, like, sent, when I emailed copy around, that was an issue. This wouldn't be an issue if people are using email to give ideas for goals.
No, I think the idea would be more like with the superintendent's evaluation, where a small group comes together, does a draft of something. You'd post a meeting, you'd have your own meeting, you'd come together over a draft, and that way, you all would have something to go on, rather than, okay, what are we gonna do? You know, you don't want to have that long conversation without anything to even bounce ideas off.
Okay.
I mean, could even, could it take place at the subcommittee, Communication Subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, I was wondering, maybe...
Why don't we do the sub, that's what I was gonna suggest. It seems appropriate.
Communication.
Yeah, let's make that part of the com-subcommittee, since the goals will go up on the website, theoretically.
Yeah, so, so, of course, anybody would be welcome to come to that subcommittee meeting.
Right.
But if you don't, if you can't attend the subcommittee meeting, maybe you could email Andy any ideas you had ahead of that meeting, so the meeting's gonna be on January 5th, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right.
Does that sound reasonable?
Well, I actually think whether each of the subcommittees should have a role in that, too. So Finance could come up with some goals relating to the finance and the budget, and things like that, and teaching. Like, I think each committee could come up with a couple of goals that would fit into the overall goal setting.
Yeah, I mean, that would...
Process.
Good.
Okay.
So there's a place for it.
Yeah, we just don't have a format, because in January, we're not, all the subcommittees are not meeting in January.
That could make sense, you could have a goal thematically tied to each subcommittee.
Well, yeah, because I think it's easier to come up with goals.
So, yeah, so Mary Ann's suggesting maybe the chair of each subcommittee could send the goals by email at our meetings.
Some ideas.
Yeah, some ideas.
I mean, it's just ideas to begin with.
Yeah, right, yes.